I would like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. It is Monday, November 18th. Please rise and join me to say the pledge of allegiance. To the flag. Mr. Ross, can you please call the roll?
Reverend Matthias?
President.
Pastor Moody?
President.
Mr. O'Conner?
Mr. O'Conner.
Uh, Dr. Randles? Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
President of all.
Present.
We have a point with seven.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Support? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Celebrations.
Gracias. Celebraciones. Tenemos algunas celebraciones esta noche.
We do not have anything tonight for celebration.
No tenemos.
And what's the update on our student rep?
Para ponernos al tanto del representante estudiantil.
Doctor Baker has a young man who's going to join us in December.
I'm so sorry, December.
That's great. Our right.
Good to know.
It's nice to know that younger people also forget.
Bueno saber que los jóvenes también se olvidan.
It's nice to know our contender is considered a younger person.
Maybe we should be working on next year's student rep.
Do we, uh, Mr.?
But with that, Pastor Moody has something like to ask about.
Is it possible that we can get someone before December? Because I've been working on a couple of students who are interested. And I'd like to bring them to your attention.
I want to know if they're interested.
Get together with our vice president.
Yes.
And we want to talk with you.
But perhaps maybe we can get somebody or two divisions try to before December.
I think the next meeting is December.
Yeah, it is December.
Next month.
I think it's okay to have a rotation.
I think it's okay. Very good. If we have a rotation, it's very good.
Mr. Ross, do we have public comment for agenda items?
We do not.
Thank you. Onto reports. Secretary's report.
There's a couple items. Um, remind you about the School Choice Expo, which is this week, November 21st. Uh, located, it's going to be at City High Middle, 1720 Plainfield. 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Again, that's an opportunity to meet staff and learn more about the GRPS theme schools and centers of innovation. Applications are now available for the 14, 15 school year. Again, that's the School Choice Expo on the 21st at City High Middle, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Also, note, um, the administration building is supporting the Salvation Army Angel Tree Campaign, collecting toys and gift card donations here in this building. Please ask folks to take a tag from a decorated tree in the lobby and return an unwrapped item to, uh, to the same place here at Franklin Campus. And the donations will be accepted until this Wednesday, the 18th. At, uh, excuse me, next month, December 18th, at 1:00 p.m. So they can be delivered to Salvation Army for distribution. Any questions? Can contact Superintendent's office, Julie Anderson in there, at 819-2193. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Our superintendent's report. I would like to ask Kirk Johnson, do you come forward, please? Thank you.
Mike, come here. Good evening. Madam President, Superintendent Neal, and our other distinguished board members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening to give you a few updates on, um, a special event coming up. So I'd like to share that with you. You know, last year, we celebrated the 20th anniversary of our Thanksgiving Day Run. And it's been an event that we have been growing over the past several years. And we've outgrown the campus of Calvin College and, um, Cornerstone College. And so for the special anniversary, we moved to the streets of downtown Grand Rapids. And we had a great time there. We thought it was a really good success. So we're here, the 21st year of the event, and we're here to kick that off. And we're preparing for that, uh, coming up on November Thursday, November 28th, of course. Last year, we had thoroughly enjoyed and experienced over 2,000 participants in that event. And this year, we're looking to do the same or even more. Uh, all of our promos are out, our billboards, our radio ads are going on the air. So we're doing some interviews on television as well, and even word of mouth, uh, to get the word out about this year's Thanksgiving Day Run. Um, last year around this time, uh, registration, pre-registration was about 260 registrations. And to date, as we checked before, um, came down to the meeting, we had over 1,200. So way ahead in terms of registration. So we're looking forward to having a lot of fun there. Um, a couple of things. The race, the course is basically the same, um, as last year, with a couple of fine tuning adjustments for some congestion around the fish ladder. So some of you racers probably know where that, uh, that party is there around the fish ladder.
There weren't that many people by me.
You were ahead.
There is a runner in the mist. Um, the finish line will be inside again. You know, um, we looked at our surveys from last year, and some of the runners wanted to hear the thing from Rocky. So we're going to play Rocky as people are coming into the stadium for their finish. This year's course will be certified. And certification of the distance will allow those who are, you know, um, runner aficionados to use this time to qualify for other races, so it'll be a certified race there. We also have stage starting. So we're going to separate the advanced runners from the intermediate runners, the inner runners, the walkers, and the strollers and the crawlers.
I'm a crawler.
Yeah. However, there is a place for you all depending on your, um, skill level. So don't be afraid about that. We got the high-tech t-shirt. That seemed to be really popular in last year's evaluation. So we have that high-tech t-shirt, uh, that kind of dry-fit t-shirt, uh, coming back again. This year, we have the mini kiss try again. Uh, it's being sponsored by New Balance. They come over to sponsor the mini try. We're very excited about that. And their finish line this year will be in the arena. So they're going to get a chance to run in the big house and across the finish line there as well. To the thing with Rocky, um, there as well. Uh, New Balance has provided a finisher. A prize for every student who finishes. So that'll be nice to have there, and they can start collecting those. It's our mascot with a back with a baseball cap on and big running shoes on there. So all of our students will get that as well. The runners and spectators or family members will be able to park in all of the downtown Grand Rapids city-owned parking lots free of charge. That's not the Ellis parking lot, the Grand Rapids lot. So they'll be free of charge, uh, for that, for that event there. Uh, we're still accepting reg, uh, applications, I mean, excuse me, registrations for the race. You can go online, find us at grps.org, Backslash Athletics. Uh, we're still looking for volunteers. If one, someone is interested in volunteering at the event, they can also contact us at our email address, which is athletics@g-rps, excuse me, grps.org. Um, the method of payment is cash, checks. We're not, uh, we're looking into a system to accept credit cards, but we're not there yet. Um, the race day registration price is $25. The day of the race is $30 there. Um, we have pre-registration, pack and pick-up, excuse me, pack and pickups at Union High School. My voice is fading out. Union High School on November 27th, which is Wednesday, from noon until 6:00 p.m. Over at Union High School. So if you're pre-registered, you can go over there and pick up all of your stuff so that on race morning, you're just ready to go to the starting line there. Let's see some other details there. We want to, uh, we have our honorary and official starter for this year will be none other than our own Dr. Tony Baker. Give him a round of applause. He is currently, um, a record holder in his, um, division.
Is that over 85 or what? It's one of the other 25 age groups, senior.
He's going to be with us, and he'll get a chance to say some encouraging words to all of the runners and, uh, before he gives the racing commands and starts the race. We also have our, none other than our very own special, Miss Maureen Slade, who will be singing the national anthem for us.
I can practice.
Gotcha.
I'll be ready. I'll be ready.
What a reason to come out on a Thursday. Well, Thursday is Mo and I. Give her the gun. I'll sing.
Just wait till I show up and do that.
You'll get those runners right out of there.
They'll be gone before you know it.
One of our school choirs will, um, be performing the national anthem. We're anticipating that. It's not that. We will, um, have another mechanism for the national anthem. But we would like to take a moment to thank this year's sponsors, which is New Balance, um, Montague Designs. You may have had a card in front of you and our posters and our shirts and whatnot. Uh, Montague Design has been on board with us with that. Fifth Third Bank is one of our partners. Gordon Food Services, all of the runner snacks that you, um, will partake in at the end of the race. From Gordon Food and the partnership with the Grand Rapids. So we're looking to have a great, great time there this year, you know, and really, um, take the event to another level. We want to continue to grow it, you know, um, and we think we have room for it to get even bigger. So we're just hoping that you all come out and hope for good weather. You know, the long-range forecast is for 47 to 49, um, mostly sunny. We just hope that holds. And if that does, we always, you know, have like four, maybe 500 onsite registrations there that morning. Any questions about these Thanksgiving?
I do. I have a question. I need to know what time, because I have to do a turkey. I've had noon dinner, so I'll have to be early.
We're going to do the national anthem at 7:55. We're going to start at 8:00 a.m., all right?
Appreciate it. My family thanks you. You got it. The logo here. Use your feet before you eat.
Right. Move your feet before you eat. And you know, one of the things that we're really thankful of is our superintendent has been really supportive in all of our initiatives in terms of, uh, health and wellness and getting the community and the students active and moving. You know, it's a fun-filled event. The residual benefit is that it supports athletics. It helps offset some of the costs that we incur in athletics. But really, if we can get an entire community to observe the importance of being healthy, um, being, uh, moving and getting some activity, we want to really like to make it a broad-based community support and not just an athletic event. And so she's really stepped forward and allowed us to carry that message around, uh, being healthy and active and fit for life. So we really appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Jack, can you tell us a few of those, um, what sort of duties the volunteers will be doing or a group of students that may be interested?
Yeah, um, there's, um, a myriad of roles, um, from some of the course setup, you know, some of the markers that go on the courses, um, to, um, some of the crowd movement, um, the t-shirt check-in, registration check-in, um, our stage, um, set up our cones, our, um, snack venue, you know, so people get water in, get out, get those search for things. There's a lot of a list of things that we can email, uh, we can email a list of those roles. Make a kind of initial job description that goes along with the role. If they're interested in doing those things, we can, uh, connect them there.
And also, if the choir does follow through, there's a song written to GRPS. And I believe she sung Happy Birthday to Mo last year here.
Then I'll let her do the special. She was very good. Nice of you to give her the singing. She was very good. Have her do it. She was really very good.
We'll check with our, find our supervisor, Mrs. Malone, uh, to make that connection there for that.
So am I hearing that Mo is not going to sing?
Oh, all right. I'll be there too.
Might be able to persuade her to give up, um, an ARV selection. If I may also, uh, just quickly mention that we have kicked off our, um, Heart of West Michigan United Way campaign for this year. We're encouraging our entire district to get in, uh, involved with the, um, assist the season for caring and cheering. And we know United Way comes to us as a very supportive partner. They support many of the programs and services that our students, our families, and our communities, um, share and benefit from. And so the more that we can support them, the more they can support us. So we're going to, uh, we've launched our campaign. Information is out. And so we're encouraging not only just our staff members, but our parents and our community partners to join in with us on this campaign. So if you receive any information about the, um, campaign for this year, we're just encouraging everybody to be a part of it. And our message is that a little goes a long way. You know, uh, we're asking for each employee group, um, role group to give a minimum contribution, which is very, very minimal. And, you know, looking at it over 26 pay period, it really amounts to less than a dollar per pay period. And so, but that less, the 50 cents, the 70 cents, the 30 cents, uh, combined in total, it does, um, enormously good for the entire organization and our, um, likes our effort towards, uh, supporting United Way. So the more they can do for us, the more they can in turn do for our families and our students themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Uh, committee chair update. Dr. Baker?
Ah, yes, we had the, uh, November Academic Achievement Committee meeting last week, where we, um, discussed the second, uh, and completed the list of priority schools that we, uh, had the plans for. It's a requirement that that is presented to the board. And we will have future, um, reports later on. How many times a year, Carolyn? Is that? Three to four times. So we will have, uh, we have fairly lengthy discussions of the plans, um, for the priority schools we discussed last week. It was Dickens, uh, Team Leadership, Ottawa Hills, Westwood, uh, and Union. And also, uh, Coit, which is a focus school, which focuses on the closing achievement gap. So we had those plans. Those plans are all, I think, it's interesting, uh, for the ones this month and also last month and their distinctiveness to each other, that they are really building specific. And I think it's really important that people, that, uh, the ones from last week are not up on the website yet. Hopefully they'll be soon. And I think it's important to kind of see the distinctiveness and it will give us, so it really shows input from, um, individual schools. So, uh, and then next month, we will have a meeting and we'll probably return to, uh, looking at some academic, uh, measures and attendance.
Could I ask a question? I noticed in the newspaper they're talking about, uh, the Schools of Hope. And, um, Sherwood in particular, that was sort of a low involvement and low enrollment in regards to, I don't know if you guys are going to sort of look at that in terms of the School of Hope, uh, and the family involvement, student involvement, how to boost, um, participation. Sounds like a really fantastic program. Tutoring and that sort of thing. So I just.
Yeah, I don't know if we discussed exactly the role of parent engagement and, um, at Sherwood. But, um, so, yeah.
But we can definitely take a look at Sherwood.
Parent engagement did seem to be a thing in many of the.
The tutoring. There was some tutoring available to students and sounded like not a lot of necessarily participation. Of course, that was the newspaper's take on it.
Thanks.
Any further questions for the committee or Dr. Baker? Thank you. Next on the agenda is our purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of that? Support? Any discussion, questions? None? Could you please call the vote?
Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Conner, our president. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Sorry, are we voting on purchases already?
Yes.
Do we get straight past discussion?
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, can I? All right. That's fine. Yes.
President of all.
Yes.
President's in, it passes 8-0.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next on the agenda is approval of our consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion for approval?
I need to make a motion to approve it, but pull out the Cherry Street. I, um, I feel like I shouldn't vote on a Cherry Street aspect of it.
Do I have support for Dr. Randles' motion? Can you please call the vote on that?
Uh, Mr. Ross, yes. Mr. O'Conner, our president. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. LaGranne?
Yes. Yes.
President of all.
Yes.
Oh, and I guess actually, Dr. Randles, but mine is, excuse me, Dr. Randles.
Thank you. Okay, I don't get to vote. Yes.
Um, because it's an agenda, mine is the Cherry Street item. Passes 8-0.
Uh, Dr. Randles is recusing herself from this one. So do I have a motion to approve the? I wish I knew what you were referencing here. There's the Cherry Street.
Uh, yeah, from the health centers. Um, and then there's a funding, uh, approval for the funding.
Do I have a motion to approve the grant funding for the Cherry Street, yes, health center? Support for that?
Support.
Any discussion? Call the vote.
Uh, who made the motion? I apologize.
Who is the motion? I'm sorry. I'm the one.
And the support was?
And the support was?
Uh, Reverend Matthias.
Reverend Matthias.
Mr. Ross, yes.
Mr. Ross, yes.
Dr. Randles recused. Mr. O'Conner, our president. Uh, Pastor Moody?
Pastor Moody, yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Reverend Matthias, yes.
Uh, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Ms. Slade, yes.
Dr. Baker?
Dr. Baker, yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
LaGranne, yes.
Yes.
And passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Gracias, señor Ross.
We have no discussion items, so we are the public comment.
We have three public comments. Tenemos comentarios públicos. Tenemos tres.
Andrew Alves Steffer?
Excuse me if I mispronounced that. Disculpe si no lo pronuncié bien. Y?
And I can't read this one.
Y no puedo leer este. Me parece que Swisher.
And, uh, Paul Helder.
Y Paul Helder.
If you can make your way down.
Si pueden pasar aquí abajo. El señor Alfred Steffer.
And, Mr. Helder.
Y Helder.
What's that?
Que pasó?
Yes, ma'am. It's that, that time of evening.
Sí. Ese es el tiempo de la noche. Sí, aquí estamos.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. St.
Sí, por favor, pasen acá para que.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, have a seat, please.
Se pueden sentar. Por favor, siéntense.
You have, um, three minutes, and we can give you a one-minute warning. Would you like that? No, because I speak fast. Okay.
No, porque a mí me gusta hablar rápido. Si no me creen, le pueden preguntar. Quiero introducirme. Yo soy el director de la Cibley. Lo quiero entregar a ustedes para que ustedes vean lo que estamos ofreciendo. He's taken the pleasure of encountering Pastor Moody and still, uh, with the parents. Quería decir, me fascina trabajar en el sistema de Grand Rapids. Me gustaría ver a cada cara de aquí en el edificio para que nuestros estudiantes puedan darle un tour de nuestro edificio y hablarles del maravilloso programa que estamos haciendo en Cibley. Y por favor, llámame Andrew. Es Alfred Steffer. Pero me gusta que me llamen por mi primer nombre. Así que me pueden llamar Andrew. Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Bienvenido. Muy bienvenido.
Uh, Ms. Swisher?
El señor Swisher? Señora Swisher, perdón.
Welcome. Would you like a one-minute warning?
Bienvenida. Le gustaría un aviso de un minuto claro. Como no?
My name is Ann Swisher. I am a Grayson member. And I work at Kent Transition in Mayfield. Solamente quiero decir que pasa muchas cosas en el sistema de Grand Rapids, las escuelas. Yo estoy muy contenta. Quiero traer un punto. Estoy cuestionando algo que ha estado, se nos ha dicho, que tenemos que cumplir como los miembros de Grayson, especialistas de empleadores. Las personas que trabajan como en el Kent Transition, en el centro, nos dicen que nos van a quitar donde nos sentamos, nuestro pupitre. Yo puedo entender que tal vez hayan algunas personas que se sientan mucho en sus escritorios. Yo no experimento. It's in the edificio where I'm standing, pero me gustaría, o prefiero, yo prefiero que no me llevarían a mí, no me llevaran a mi aula, mi pupitre. Hago todo mi trabajo, hacemos trabajo, hacemos los libros. Y nosotros utilizamos nuestro pupitre. Y no creo que lo estemos sobreusando. Así que si esto llega a su mesa y se discute, me gustaría decirle especialmente porque trabajamos con adultos jóvenes, es muy importante establecer una comunicación con ellos. Nosotros somos sus mentores, sus consejeros, sus profesores. Y ese pequeño recurso es de nosotros. Ellos no pueden ir a sentarse a nuestras aulas. Es lo que establece es una relación, aunque sea asimilándolo. Yo espero que si esto viene hacia donde ustedes, lo puedan ver y que no nos quiten nuestro pupitre, por favor. Gracias.
Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches, todos. Buenas noches. Yo lo voy a mantener corto así que eso va a ser bueno. Primeramente, no voy a verlo a ustedes. Le voy a desear un día de acción de gracias antes de, para que ustedes estén conscientes. Teníamos una reunión, y cuando digo yo, digo yo, Mickey Savage, Eric Thompson, de acuerdo a las evaluaciones. Aparentemente, hay unas cuantas cosas sustanciales, cambios sustanciales, que va a ser un gran paso en una dirección positiva. Me gustaría decirle también que nos vamos a encontrar en el próximo mes para colaborar. Vamos a estar envueltos en esto primera vez, para darle unas cuantas notas y hablar un poco de lo que puede constituir logros adicionales, lo más que nosotros podamos hacerlo ver en lo adelante. No voy a hablar mucho sobre el proceso. La prensa de Grand Rapids ya ha indicado que quiere hacer una historia sobre eso. Sharon y yo hemos hablado al respecto, y no quiere, no quiero robar ningún trabajo del de ellos. Así que aquellos que están interesados en casa deben de leer esos artículos cuando salgan. Eso es todo. Thank you very much. Gracias. Muchas gracias. Y aunque ustedes no lo crean, ya he concluido. Gracias.
Any final comments?
Algún comentario final? No, sin comentarios.
Mr. Ross?
Señor Ross?
Um, I'm just nosy hooves.
Yo solamente quiero saber del grupo de estudiante. ¿Quién tenemos acá?
What class is this?
¿Qué clase es esta? Es de, de comunicaciones, de periodismo. Aquí hay uno aquí atrás. Aquí es una clase de periodista, ¿no? De la universidad. Gracias. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Si tienen alguna pregunta, dirínganselo a estos dos acá.
No, I don't have any comment.
No, no tengo ningún comentario, pero muy excitado de poder hacer algún trabajito de voluntario a ver a Tony haciendo su cosa. Y si yo me aparezco y canto de nuevo. Yo tengo que hacer la cena. No, sin comentarios. Gracias.
Baker, Blaze and Tony?
Baker, Blaze and Tony. Me gusta eso. Me gusta. Me gustaría. El año pasado, cuando fue en downtown, yo lo he corrido en varias oportunidades en los últimos años. Cuando estaba allí en Grand Rapids, era una tremenda celebración. Así que tener, usted sabe, todo que está en un buen sitio. Está en buen lugar la Colea de Grand Rapids. Así que le pido a todos que bajen y celebren lo que es parte de, lo que es ser parte de Grand Rapids. Así que el 28 de mañanas para divertirnos allá. No tengo más nada. Es bueno saber que nuestro presidente de la Unión ha nos ha hablado en dos reuniones consecutivas. Nos dice que las cosas están bien. Así que es bueno saber que las cosas están bien. Señor Moody, sí. Yo quiero felicitar al superintendente, la superintendente, y la reunión de progreso académico que tuvimos. Y, y lo como, lo bien que están, le están yendo los estudiantes, los profesores que están envueltos, y realmente enseñándoles las cosas importantes a los niños. En la otra semana pasada, el señor Tony Evans también trajo unos datos muy importantes en referencia a lo que está pasando en los, en la, en el país. Así que trajeron muchos datos que están, están en colgancia con lo que está pasando aquí. O sea que todo el mundo está, eh, bien al punto. Estoy muy preocupado con la lectura pobre que existe. Hay muchas personas en la comunidad que están ansiosos para poder ayudar al sistema de, de escuela de Grand Rapids. Gracias. Reverendio Matthias?
Yeah, I did want to comment. Sí, yo quería comentar. Yo estoy de acuerdo en que este fin de semana tuvimos, nos juntamos todos, el plero, y estábamos viendo ese aspecto. ¿Cómo podemos ayudar a nuestras escuelas públicas? Estoy de acuerdo. La comunidad entera está comprometida para ayudar. Y están de acuerdo dónde está la escuela de Grand Rapids. Actualmente podemos decir cómo podemos ayudar, y eso es bueno. Eso es bueno ver esa capacidad. Yo creo que la, Dr. Ferguson nos dio unos datos, eh, para ayudar a la comunidad.
Yo creo que el doctor Ferguson nos dio unos datos para ayudar a la comunidad cívica también, que pueda comprometerse. Parece que todas las piezas están juntas y en conjunto creo que vamos a ver grandes cambios en nuestra comunidad, particularmente entre nuestra juventud minoritaria, que está en tan alto riesgo. Tenemos tanto potencial, así que absolutamente hay muchas cosas excitantes que ustedes han hecho para que traigan a estas personas a la mesa. Así que es muy excitante esto. Señor LaGranne? Sí, una de las cosas que quiero, que me quedó un poquito atrás fue en cuanto a la compra, la agenda de compra, pero quería dar crédito donde crédito se merece. Una de las cosas que estuvo en la agenda de compra fue el proyecto solar en Blanford, y lo vi, y había una beca de cincuenta mil dólares. Así que yo estuve preocupado porque estamos realmente valorando muy bien esto. La persona aquí en nuestras facilidades han podido hacer un programa de quince kilovatios, así que un buen producto específicamente para todos los que le gusta eso, la tecnología que le están viendo es un guay. Está como a tres punto treinta centavos un bar, un volteo, o sea, que no hay manera de ponerlo por debajo de dos cincuenta ahora mismo, pero el mercado solar está lleno de personas que están dispuestas a cobrarle mucho más de lo que deben. Así que esto es un gran valor. Esto no es un precio inflado, es un buen, muy buen, buen precio, así que no solamente vamos a obtener mucho energía solar, pero para que sepan es cómo salvar tres casas. Así que lo estamos consiguiendo a muy buen precio, así que muy feliz. Y gracias por ser nuestro perro guardián en cuanto a eso. Disculpe que llegué tarde. No tenía teléfono, ni televisión, y todo se vino abajo el sábado, así que llegó alguien, pero no lo pudo arreglar como. Así que todos aquellos que no tienen ninguna energía, manténganse calientes, no se queden en su casa, busquen una amistad, o instalar unos paneles solares. Ellos realmente no trabajan en la noche, no.
And thank you for all the people who are working hard.
Y gracias a todas las personas que están trabajando tan duro para restablecer la energía. Ha sido un escenario terrible, y para eso yo siempre me he pasado muchas horas sin calefacción ni nada. No se da uno mucho cuenta cuando le hace falta. Solamente quiero decir gracias por el día de acción de gracia, los administradores. Ya estamos pasados del término medio, y a veces nos ponemos un poquito rezagoso, pero sé que todo el mundo está empujando bastante fuerte, y aprecio mucho su trabajo. Se ha concluido la reunión.